Time is now six forty. We will resume with our open meeting. I do want to let the record reflect that trustee Taylor Gilwood did join us at about five forty-five. We will go ahead and go forward with the public participation. Okay, there is no public participation. We'll move forward to staff reports by Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Johnson and board members. It has been a wonderful, wonderful summer that went by too quickly, first of all. We are, this is the last week for our summer hours. We will return to normal working hours on Monday. And get ready for convocation on August the fourth. Things are going very, very well as we've had emergency preparedness today, which was really good. Our staff, we had two sessions. The first session was made up of nurses and athletes, not, coaches. And it really went well. The second session was made up of our principals and assistant principals. They gave a lot of views on how we keep our staff and students safe. And especially emergencies, unexpected emergencies, which we really have to. We know people, there are so many people that are getting sick, have heart attacks. And what do you do in the case of an emergency? So we have to keep abreast of that and just try to help as much as we can. So that ran really, really well. We also are asking you, we have several items on the agenda tonight for your approval. The first is the salary schedule, which I'm sure people are interested in. And we are, we are excited about our salary schedule. We definitely want everyone to understand it's yours. We are asking that you approve the salary schedule for teachers, which we would start our salary at fifty-five thousand, five hundred, that's zero years' experience. And that's for teachers, and that's coming from the state. The state has given our teachers money, it's given districts money to give our teachers raises. It started at the third year, but we decided to move it up from our own coffers for the first and second year. And that is a good thing. We're asking three percent for all other staff members. So that was one thing. We're also asking for several policies to be approved. The first policy is to opt out of private charter school students that are enrolled in private charter school, coming to our school for extracurricular. That is a policy that was passed in eighty-ninth legislative session, but we're asking to opt out of that in our district. Also cellphone usage, House Bill fourteen eighty-one. The state, which has turned it into a law, that no usage of cellular phones, watches, or laptops, or tablets should be in the classrooms at all, and that's the entire day. The state has allowed us to ask for you to approve a policy of possession as well as usage. Possession means that a student would not be able to bring a cellphone, a smartwatch, or tablet to school along with the usage. We want to work with our parents. We understand that we have students that ride the bus. They drive cars. And we know that parents track their students after hours. We have athletes that we know that they need to understand where their kids are. So we're going to work with our parents, but we're asking that our parents to work with us and to ensure that their students understand that phone usage is prohibited during the instructional day. And that means from the time they enter that facility to the time they go home. I think that's fair because we could have, now, we're going to do that for one year, and we're going to see how it works out. We're going to work with our parents. We will call them. We will remind them. We're going to remind our students. It can be done. We want our students focusing on academics and not talking on the phone. So that is where we're headed, and I think that is a good, I guess, compromise. So hopefully, our parents will agree to that and move forward. We are asking for the approval of reimbursement resolution for proposed issuance of district unlimited tax bond. And what that is, we thank our community once again for passing the three-hundred-million-dollar bond for a new middle school, a new stadium. We're excited about that. But one of the resolutions is that if we have expenses leading up to the selling of the bond, that we would be able to get reimbursed from those bond funds. And then the other is that we're selling bonds tonight. If there are questions, we have Mr. Greer here that can answer those questions as well. And we're asking to also reinvest and get, I think it's going to be reimbursement. And the second one is just making sure that we do something else with our bonds on the agenda as well. There are three things on there for, let's see, for the, for the bonds. Yeah, thirteen, if you look at it. Authorizing these bonds, reimbursement. Okay, and that one is take action, just like your, is refinancing, refinancing bonds. So we're hoping to get, I think it's ten million dollars in refinancing, and then we'll be able to pay down our bonds, our past bonds, which will help our taxpayers lower their taxes. So those are some exciting things that are, that's happening, that we're asking you to help us with. And so far, things are going very, very well. We're excited about the first school day, which is August the thirteenth. It seemed like our coaches, our principals have been in school all summer. So, and we, obviously, we've worked all summer as well. We have the people in place, and we are ready to work. Parents have been very supportive, and we're looking forward to a wonderful school year, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ms. Lot?
This month's, this board meeting, media report covers the timeframe from May fourteenth to July twenty-fourth. I was absent for the June board meeting. So at the end of May, we had all of our graduation ceremonies from pre-K kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade, high school, and we had CTE students along with Wilson students who graduated from Lamar State College. And then, of course, our Wilson and Memorial students graduated from high school at Fort Park. These are a few remaining May observations after May fourteenth. Three June observations, the fourth of July. And as Dr. Porter just stated, our convocation will be on Monday, August the fourth, at eight o'clock a.m. in our competition gym at the high school. Our Titans on Tour has taken a very good uptick this summer. We had several submissions from Tennessee, San Diego, Hawaii, Washington, D.C., Minneapolis, Missouri, and Kansas, just to name a few. And this is not including all of our auxiliaries who also traveled to their various camps this summer. In the top left corner, one of our Sam Houston Elementary teachers was featured in a school spotlight by the Ark of Southeast Texas to recognize her efforts in the classroom, so she was nominated. And there was a news report on that. In the top middle, our CTE campus has a fully functional cafe that the students planned, organized, and they actually fully operate the cafe every day, the culinary arts students. And they prepare the food and they sell the food in a cashless process. And they have a little seating area for those who want to sit and eat in the Titan Cafe. And they offer meals, drinks, and desserts, and that is for CTE students and CTE staff. Our, some of our students receive scholarships from the Port Arthur Rotary Club. We had some more end-of-the-year activities where we did start this year through the Port Arthur Education Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce. Local businesses donated gifts to our top ten students at Memorial in that top middle-right photo, and then the top ten students at Wilson. The treat bags for this, since this was our first time, there were some trinkets, but there were some gift cards that the kids really appreciated. And then, moving forward, we hope to have more businesses participate so that the bags are fuller. But we plan to start a new tradition of rewarding our top ten students at both campuses in May. In the bottom-left corner, Ms. Oliver's class at Alpha created a three-D city using geometry concepts. In the bottom, in the middle, we had some news coverage. The Channel Twelve News wanted to know how do we address the summer slide when sometimes students have a learning loss? So we had a story that covered how we were addressing those summer slide issues. The bottom-right corner, we have five seniors who earned full scholarships from Golden Pass LNG to study process technology. And here are some more photos of end-of-year activities. Our Life Skills students attended their annual spring fling dance at Beaumont. At the bottom-left corner, Travis Elementary held a STEM Day. In the middle at the bottom, Alpha students learned how to use a drone. The top-middle, Thomas Jefferson students attended a three-day course on trafficking and exploitation, and you can see their graduation certificates, and that's a very relevant topic for our area. And then we have Wilson students who experienced a STEM field day by visiting Houston Christian University, and also the iFly facility where they got to experience like skydiving simulations. In the top-left corner, Wheatley Elementary School, along with the nation, celebrated the sixtieth year of the Head Start program. So they created this drone photo where the whole campus came out to create the number sixty. At the top in the middle, there was a, I think it's called Dinosaur George exhibit that had a lot of dinosaur fossils on display at Adams Elementary. And the students, you see them with their clipboards. It was a museum exhibit, but they still tied it into a learning experience for the students. We have more, we have twelve new teachers this year who are going to receive teacher incentive allotment bonuses. And then we have, I think it was two teachers who have increased their amount of their bonus through the TIA. In the middle on the left, we have a Wilson Early College student who's also in the marching heat band who attended Boyd State, and that's a first in a long time for our district to have a student that represented PISD at Boyd State. The principal at Alpha kind of got in on the eighth-grade prom festivities with the fellas, took a picture showing the money. And at the bottom, Lamar University has started a new program called Early Bird Admission, to, and it's aimed at attracting high school juniors to the campus. They offered seventy-five of our juniors scholarships totaling over two-point-two-million dollars, and also early college admission. In the top-left corner, this is a list of all of the CTE students who participated in the Lamar Port Arthur graduation ceremony in May with the certifications that they earned. It's a Level One certificate. At the top in the middle in the blue, these are our teachers who participated in the Workforce Solutions Annual Teacher Externship Program. Then we had two of our UIL choir students who received the honor of Outstanding Performer, which is, I believe, Kalen Gardner received it last year. And so we have two students who also received it this year. And for the first time in that I know of, the Titan Salon at the CTE campus was actually open throughout the month of June for summer hours all day, Monday through Thursday. We have our valedictorian and salutatorian. And then nine of our district's graduates earned scholarships in the amount of ten thousand dollars each from the Port Arthur Industrial Group. We had a total of more than a hundred and ten students from the CTE campus that earned their certifications this year. Of course, this is not all hundred and ten photos, but you get a gist of the total for each program category. And then Bechtel, I have that Bechtel hired fifteen of our students, but in the leadership conference yesterday, Dr. Martin Davis said it was actually eighteen students that were hired by Bechtel for their welding and millwright program. Last year, they hired six of our students, and our six students did so well that this year they hired eighteen. The Class of Twenty Twenty-Five earned over twelve million dollars in scholarships. Our Flames Drill Team held different mini-camps throughout the summer, and several of them were with some of our elementary dance groups. So here's a photo of them with Port Akers. I know they did Sam Houston. And I'm pretty sure there were some more elementary campuses. So that's that vertical alignment when you start training the elementary kids on what to look forward to and how to prepare to be aflame once they get to the high school level. The top picture is our seniors at their senior sunrise in August, and then the bottom picture is our seniors at their senior sunset in May. We had at least three, if not four, of our rising junior students attend what is called the Nightingale Experience at Lamar University in June. And it gave students who aspire to be nurses the opportunity to spend one day at the Dishman School of Nursing on Lamar's campus, participating in nursing simulations at the School of Nursing. They stayed the night in the dorm with a roommate to give them more of a college experience. And then the following day, they spent the first half of the day at St. Elizabeth Hospital, also engaging in real-life nursing situations. And I know the students were able to see and feel a real-life placenta because someone had given birth that morning. They were kind of looking for a little more action in the emergency room, and I was trying to explain to them that it's good that there was no action in the emergency room. These are some of our summer athletics. Everybody was working out this summer, the volleyball team, the girls' basketball, boys' basketball, football. The top, the dancer that says Lamar University Dance Team recruit, this young lady graduated. She was a member of the Flames. She was also on the powerlifting team and a cheerleader. And she is going to be on the Lamar University Dance Team, Ms. Jayla Clay. Our amazing alumni, Elandon Roberts, who plays in the NFL, had his annual free football camp for the kids in our community, and it was very successful. We posted a video that was produced by L.D. Ray that covered that camp. We also had a very successful Lady Titans Basketball Camp with our new head basketball coach. Our choir students did very well at UIL. We have one middle school student that plays softball, and she was invited to participate in a national selection event, and I believe it's going to be held in December. But I asked her, her dad submitted that picture, and I said, be sure to let us know how she does in their December game and send us photos so we can post that as well. Sam Houston now has a flag corps for some of its students, so that's who circled in the yellow circle. To my knowledge, that's the first elementary campus to have a flag corps. So they are really engaged over on that campus. And the bottom-right corner, our band students did very well at the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest and celebrated after the competition. We posted our varsity football and our Lady Titans volleyball schedules. We also had band camp this summer, and we invited the middle schools. Our softball team even had workouts this summer. And even our Little Titans, as you can see, were participating in Community Track Meets, the Little Titans Track Club. And then our Tiny Titan from Wheatley, whose dad is the baseball coach, is already on the baseball team indoor practice facility. The band and the Flames attended their annual camp at Southern University. And in the bottom-left corner, Janaria Lewis received one of the top honors for a drill team. Our volleyball team was able to send twenty students, twenty volleyball players, to volleyball skills camp at LSU. And it was totally funded by their fundraising efforts. So the students did not have to pay for anything except for lunch and dinner for the days that they were away at the camp. And the camp was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So the participation fee, the hotel rooms, and the transportation was covered by fundraising efforts. And they were able to take four kids from middle school. I'm thinking that the two at the top right is middle school, but I'm not really sure. Could it be fifth grade going to sixth grade? But the two in the middle with the purple shirts are definitely middle school. At the bottom, we have had students that signed letters of commitment this summer to baseball players. And this has not happened in quite some time where we have baseball players to sign letters of commitment. So we have one headed to Heston and one headed to Houston-Tillison. And then we have four football players that are going to graduate this year in twenty-twenty-six. The baseball players are twenty-twenty-five, the football players are twenty-twenty-six, who've made their college commitments known. These are some of our community engagement activities. Our cheerleader squad is fundraising to purchase two new mascot uniforms. And the Flames are also fundraising right now. I think that due to our social media campaign, we helped advertise the prostate screening enough to where three hundred men were checked. More community engagement. We have announced to the community in the bottom right about the new cellphone policy. So we started early on July the third, and we have continued to remind them. So come August twelfth, that's it, that's all. Our Back to School Fun Fest will be this Saturday from eleven to two at the high school. We had one teacher, Augusta Dixon, who has been at Booker T. Washington right now. She's been in the district teaching for forty years, and she was recognized by the Texas Legislature. And so her name was called on the floor. So we posted the video, which is in the middle, and we also posted the actual resolution and her picture. And this is our media summary, several accomplishments by our alumni. One of our alumni and former Port Akers Elementary Assistant Principal was sworn in as our new Port Commissioner, Mr. Fred Owens. Dewayne Jones is now the new president and CEO of the Port Arthur Teachers Federal Credit Union. Darius Charlotte, who you will see a lot around the school district, is an alumni who was shown recognition on the police, social media. And then Aisha Mason, who is a Memorial graduate, and her dad is an AP at Alpha. She's been named the new principal at an elementary school where she lives. Eric Narcisse is, his position at his job. And then one of our volleyball students who graduated in twenty-twenty-four was recognized for academic and volleyball honors at her college. And lastly, unfortunately, we have lost several members of our PISD family. Ernestine Alexander, James Clayton, Lawrence Elmore Senior. I cannot make out the name of the young lady with the red sweater. Roylene Fontenot, Frank Neal, and Annie La Day Daniels. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lot. Also, board members, I would like to once again introduce you to two of our newest team members who have started and started off strong and running, running the race. First being Ms. Kayla Jacobs. Mrs. Kayla Jacobs is the Assistant Superintendent for Operations. She's over maintenance, custodial, receiving child attrition technology bond. And she's asking for more, so. But she is doing a wonderful job, and she is a product, so, from Port Arthur. Ms. Jacobs, would like to say hello to the board and the community.
Hello, board. It's good to see you all, and hello, community. I'm very happy to be here, alum, alumnus of the Port Arthur ISD. Just excited to hit the ground running as Dr. Porter said. Thank you.
And I'm telling you, she has ran several laps. Next, we have Dr. Charisma Papion. Dr. Papion comes to us with a wide range of just experience. She's personable. She's all over the place. She's going to be working with our principals, assistant principals, and more. So she is a welcome addition. Dr. Papion.
I'm very excited to be here. I have received a very warm welcome. I am very excited to be a part of the Port Arthur ISD and the community. So I'm looking to just do what I can to make the lives of our students that much better. And so just whatever I can do, I'm here to serve, and I just, I love my team already, so it's going to be great. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you. That concludes our staff reports.
Madam President, I just wanted to formally welcome you all to the ISD, and also thank Ms. Lot as well. I call that section the Good News Section. That session, section of the board meeting always brings really just a warm light to meeting, but also to everything that we're doing in the ISD, especially in our city, as, you know, we are constantly evolving and showing great things. I wanted to take this moment to really just appreciate and thank Dr. Porter for, Kim said I was going to do that. Great minds think alike, sis. I wanted to publicly, because I don't think we, as a board, let alone as a community, get an opportunity to really understand the work that is going on here. And as a member of the Gen Z community, a member that cannot live without his cellphone, putting myself in the shoes of the students that are currently in school, how much of a challenge it's going to be. I want to thank you for proposing a policy that does not, of course, hinder our partnership with the community, but fits in line with where we want to go academically, and also as it relates to what we have to do for the state. I want to emphasize that this isn't a PISD policy. This is a state policy. And hopefully, this will really ignite our community to come back to being unity and community, being able to understand that we have to make decisions based upon what we're given. And if we want to see those changes, the person to talk to is going to Austin, talking about the things that impact our ISD and our students, because Port Arthur ISD is not like Beaumont ISD, it's not like needle and ISD, and it's really shown not like HISD. We have our own unique challenges, and I wanted to say publicly before we even vote, thank you for even bringing something that will, of course, hopefully, extend that partnership to our parents. And hopefully, our parents can understand that this isn't anything that we can change, but we're doing the best for our district, for our students, for our particular demographics. So, parents, I'm encouraging you all to please work with our ISD on this. As Dr. Porter said, we're trying this out for a year. That year is going to be contingent upon our partnerships. Make sure your child is prepared to come to school and not use their cellphone until three oh five, four fifteen. Have that conversation, not just on Facebook, but have it before you get out the car with them, before they leave out that house, because this is an opportunity that is not given at many ISDs. We see other ISDs have chosen to use pockets and pouches and make sure that their children don't have it at all. We're doing something different, so please support us on this. We need to bring back the unity to community. And I just, I could not just let that pass by without acknowledging that simple proposal, which shows a lot about your commitment to wanting to extend that partnership to the community. It's a two-way street. We have to work together. So I just wanted to say thank you as a member of Gen Z for making that, because when I don't have this cellphone on me, I feel like I'm losing my mind. So the fact that I can have it with me but not use it, that makes me sleep a little bit better, all right? So thank you.
Okay, before we move on to meetings, I was going to utter some of the same things, so I won't go over the unity with the cellphone policy or anything. Trustee Gilwood has already went over that. However, I would like to say a big thank you to our superintendent, as well as Dr. Owens, and can't really remember exactly the remainder of the names, but the people who have been a part of our interviewing processes for all of these positions that we've had. I think that you guys have done an amazing job of selecting very, very knowledgeable and worthy people of the positions for our district. I have not had any complaints with who you guys have picked, and it just amazes me that we're able to find that amount of talent and have these people a part of Port Arthur ISD, actually even coming over from other ISDs and bringing it. So I know it's not an easy job. You guys have a lot to look at when you're doing these applicants. You have a lot of applicants and interviews, and I do think that y'all are doing a very good job in the betterment of our district with the selections you've had, along with the principals, getting the amount, I know Dr. Porter doesn't say it a lot, but we should pat ourselves on the back, because the last couple of meetings we've had, the teachers that we've been bringing on from these principals have been certified. because the last couple of meetings we've had, the teachers that we've been bringing on from these principals have been certified teachers. We're not talking about, um, you know, um, subs or anything, but our principals are really getting out there, like they're promoting. I see them on their personal pages, on their school pages, in different locations. They are doing what they can to get us very qualified and certified teachers. And, you know, sometimes they go above and beyond what their salary would even pay them for, because they want to see their schools be better. So not only with the, uh, superintendent and our administration making great decisions, but I urge our principals to continue the momentum and get these certified teachers in here so that we can offer our children a Port Arthur the best we can. So definitely kudos to them across the board on that.
You have a comment, Dr. Brown.
Go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to associate myself with the two board members who've already spoken, Mr. Getwood and certainly, uh, also President Johnson. Um, I also want to, uh, applaud, um, the superintendent and staff for, for the great work that's going on. That report that Ms. Lot just gave, you know, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna scream like in the old days, but I won't do it right now. But, I mean, that, that was, that was outstanding. Uh, and I know you rushed through it, 'cause there's so much more that you probably could have, could have, uh, shared. So I just want to acknowledge that. But I also want to, uh, also applaud the superintendent for the staff that we've been hiring, including the two new executive members. But it, it, but even beyond, as, uh, President, uh, Wyckoff Johnson just said, the teachers and others that we've been, uh, hiring. People don't, people don't leave a, a place they think is a good place to work to another place unless they think that things are gonna be better. So the idea that we're considered as, as a better place to work and, and be part of, that's, that's, that's quite a compliment, of which I'm just so very proud and thankful. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and, I don't know what generation I'm in anymore, uh, trustee Getwood. I don't know if they had generations.
I'm not gonna say.
When I was, no, it's a, don't, don't, don't help me. No, but, but actually, but I, no, I actually know that. But, but, but I applaud you what you said, 'cause, you know, the, you know, I got two cellphones on me all the time, one for work, one for home. But, uh, you know, I'd be lost too if I didn't have my phone available. But I think superintendent and staff are coming with a good compromise position to take. And I, I hope that the parents and the students will cooperate. If they don't, we'll, we'll make an adjustment. But, yeah, I applaud the superintendent on that, that path that we're taking as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank, oh, and I'm sorry, look, I hate to hold y'all, but I also want to just really, really quick commend our board as well. Um, here lately, uh, you know, there's no secret that, you know, we may disagree on things, but here lately, we had a, a much better camaraderie. We've really been bouncing ideas off of each other and really supporting each other as a board. And I, I definitely want to make sure I address that, that we need to keep that momentum going across the board as well. Continue to, you know, extend our education so that we can be better as a board. So in addition to all of that, I also want to give ourselves a pat on the back as in supporting and doing, you know, what we can for you guys.
And I, and if I may add, this is one of the first times in a long time that I was able to meet with all board members and sit down and have wonderful conversations with each one. So I definitely appreciate that, because it helps us out if something that I need to change or look into before. So it has been a wonderful, wonderful beginning. Thank you for that.
That was a perfect opportunity to play the theme song, "We're moving on up." We are doing that.
Okay, alright, now to minutes. I'm sorry, you guys. Um, minutes, consider and if appropriate, approve minutes of the June twenty-six, twenty-five regular board meeting. Can I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by, uh, trustee, uh, Diane Brown and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries for the minutes. Uh, consent agenda. The following items, which are routine and or recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the board president per BE local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. I will give you all a quick minute, since we have already discussed this, to look at our consent agenda items, number one through twenty-four. And then I will ask for a, um, motion to approve those consent agenda items.
Madam President, I move to, uh, approve consent agenda items one through twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by trustee Narcisse, Vice President Narcisse, and second by trustee Getwood to, uh, approve those consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those consent agenda items do pass. We will move forward to personnel. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Porter.
President Johnson, board members, I have given you the list of certified teachers for your approval. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee, uh, Johnny Brown and second by trustee Diane Brown to approve those employment teachers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let me continue.
Next, President Johnson, board members, I'm asking for the employment of principal for elementary, Dr. Shalonda Randall, Randall Filer.
Can I get a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Narcisse and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And last.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Filer will become the principal of, um, Adams Elementary, and Mr. Alfredo Jimenez will transfer to Terrell Elementary effective immediately. Next, I'm asking for your approval of employment of coordinator for assessment and instructional support, Dr. Maya Turner.
So move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Getwood and second by Vice President Narcisse. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that concludes our personnel. Um, can I have a motion for adjournment at seven seventeen?
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Here's a motion by trustee Diane Brown and second by trustee Getwood. You have a great evening.